Good evening. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. I'm not going to use. Today is Thursday, May 25th, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM.
You're going to need to mail out.
See how that works?
I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to the many people we have in attendance this evening and to anyone who may be at home watching online. Director Miller, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First, we will receive a Student Performance and Achievement Committee report about the world's best workforce, read by grade three. The presenters are Amina Oftodar, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Brandon Lowe, Data and Assessment Coordinator, and Christine McDonald, Elementary CISA Coordinator. Welcome.
Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, members of the board, thank you for your time this evening. As our final SPA report for the 2223 school year, we are sharing information around our literacy and reading proficiency and growth for our kindergarten through grade three students, and we'd like to also share our literacy programming overview and the work involved in the improvement efforts for this year. Students meeting the critical benchmark of reading at grade level by grade three is one indicator of future success. The state of Minnesota's goal is that all third graders read at grade level as part of the world's best workforce framework. In 191, we use two main metrics for this key indicator. The first is the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, and here are our results for our third graders last spring, taking the MCA for the first time. What we saw last spring was our participation increasing from 63% to 93%, and that it encompassed almost all of our students as we came out of the pandemic. We did fall short with only a third of our students, 35%, meeting that third grade proficiency goal. Right now, this month, our third graders have completed their first time of the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. We will see that data in August of '23, and I'll be happy to share that data with you at that time. I look forward to sharing that data with you because the other indicator that we use in our local our local indicator here in the district is showing some incredible results and improvements that we hope will bear out in the state testing. But when we look back at our results for 2022, we not only look at the group as a whole, but also looking at how different groups, different populations within the 191 community are performing. We do continue to see last spring a lag, a performance disparity of about 26% between our BIPOC students and our white students. This same percentage, about 25% disparity, shows up with our students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch and those who are not eligible for free and reduced lunch. These are two main benchmarks. The first, for our BIPOC students and for our students of free and reduced lunch, are indicators for our Achievement and Integration Program as well. But the MCA does not tell us the whole story, and we have shared in previous presentations the strategies and the programming that the collaboration with teachers, principals, and CISA team members have done to address these needs and areas of improvement in our literacy programming. We are very excited to share the impact of that work just in this one year. The FastBridge assessment for kindergarteners is a locally identified assessment. It is a norm-referenced assessment, meaning our students are being compared to their like peers across the nation. This assessment for our kindergarten and first graders' early reading is administered individually, one-on-one with each student. For second and third graders, the A-reading is a computer adaptive test which adapts to the difficulty and rigor based on how the students answer the questions. The data on these slides is preliminary, meaning not all students had completed their assessments at the time of publication. We will share the fall and winter data that we had, and then we will also share additional information available now that all student scores from last week have been collected and analyzed.
So this table that you're seeing now represents three-year data trends on the FastBridge assessment that Director Oftodar just mentioned. So we have year 2021, 2022, and 2023, the preliminary scores that we have so far. So I am particularly drawn to this table because you can see a certain cohort track through the years. So if you, for example, follow the students that were kindergarteners in 2021, 40.5% of those students demonstrated proficiency on the FastBridge that year. If you follow the yellow, when they were in first grade, you can see in 2022, 46.63% of them demonstrated proficiency, and you can just follow them down the line like that. So it is quite interesting when you, you know, when you can follow a cohort to see that progress, see the progress that's being made year after year, rather than just looking at each year in isolation.
One area of data that I'd like to update for you is, under the 2023 numbers, our first-grade cohort, you'll see the number is 43.52%, meeting the level of proficiency. Now that we have all of the students' data in, that number has risen to 52.1%. So really making sure that now that we have all of the students' data in, we see that all of our numbers are scoring above 50%, and those numbers continue to rise over the course of the cohort.
Good evening. On this slide, this data that's presented before you displays our kindergarten and first-grade early reading winter data, so fall to winter. And as illustrated, we broke this data into two groups, our students who are part of the Hagerty Pilot Group and our students who are not part of the Hagerty Pilot Group. And you can see on the winter data that's before you that our students in the Hagerty group were outperforming our students in the non-Hagerty group in the low-risk category. I'd like to note to you that high risk indicates a strong likelihood of a student not reading at grade level by the end of third grade. Within recent days, most of our students have completed the spring early reading assessments, and our new data displays exciting news. When looking at our kindergarten students, the comparison between our non-Hagerty category and our Hagerty category is staggering. This spring, 43% of non-Hagerty kindergarten students performed in the low-risk category. Conversely, 68.18% of our Hagerty kindergarten students performed in the low-risk category. That is a 25% difference. And when looking at the high-risk category, 32% of our non-Hagerty kindergarten students fell at high risk, while only 15% of our Hagerty kindergartners fell in the high-risk category.
So just as a reminder, that the Hagerty pilot was done with three of our sites this year and will expand to all sites next year, especially based on this information.
Now, this slide that you're looking at, the previous slide illustrated students in the low, some in high-risk category of reading at grade level by the end of third grade. This slide before you illustrates students' overall growth from fall to winter. And similarly, you will notice improved scores within our Hagerty group. And as mentioned numerous times this evening, we have the majority of our spring data, and yet again, we have uplifting information. When looking at our kindergarten students and their growth from fall to spring as measured by early reading, our Hagerty students significantly outperformed the non-Hagerty group. For example, this spring, 21% of our non-Hagerty students fell in the flat-growth category, while only 3% of our Hagerty students fell in the flat-growth category. And 9% of our non-Hagerty students made aggressive growth, while 32% of our Hagerty students made aggressive growth.
The impact of Hagerty and the phonics, as a phonics curriculum, as a whole Tier One core instruction for our students is showing dramatic results, and we hope to see those results as these students move forward into third grade. Our literacy program does have four components now. Making Meaning, which is our comprehension program; Being a Reader, which is our vocabulary and phonics program; Being a Writer, our writing program; and then Hagerty, which is our phonemics awareness and direct phonics instruction. We also offer Support, which is What-I-Need Time, in which students participate in various activities related to reading, some of them intervention, some of them enrichment, based on where they are along the continuum for reading proficiency. We also have intervention systems. We use the systematic instruction phoneme awareness and phonics and sight words, known as SIPs, that is provided to students in small groups. And FastBridge interventions, those are interventions that are identified by the FastBridge assessments to match student scores on their assessment. Because this is what our literacy program looks like, Coordinator McDonald has spent a long time with our literacy committee looking at how do we improve the work that's being done in instruction for our students.
In July of 2022, the kindergarten through fifth grade Elementary Literacy Steering Committee began working to reexamine the district's current standard work and its alignment to the K-5 literacy curriculum. Through this journey, our committee researched the educational curriculum and instructional gurus such as Richard DeForre, Robert Marzano, Mike Matos, and Rick Wormley. And from this research, the committee focused on the following as their work. We've leaned in on the four corollary questions of learning. What is it that we want all students to learn and be able to do by the end of first grade or by the end of fifth grade? How will we know if they have learned it? What will we do when they have not learned it? And what will we do if they've already learned it? The four corollary questions of learning. From these four questions, we became laser-focused in examining the Minnesota State Standards in Literacy and identifying our new grade-level guarantees, which represent specific learner outcomes. Our new grade-level guarantees are directly connected to the Minnesota State Literacy Standards with the required content and the required academic rigor. Our new grade-level guarantees and level of academic rigor is intentionally identified and designed to ensure our students are exposed to and are able to demonstrate proficiency as measured by the state standards. Our final step is aligning our new grade-level guarantees with the appropriate academic rigor to our current literacy curriculum of Being a Reader, Being a Writer, Making Meaning, and Hagerty.
Just want to share my appreciation for the principals and their instructional leadership, for the team of teachers that have worked on this literacy steering committee, and to the CISA coordinators who helped facilitate that. The work that they have been doing takes us through that continuous improvement cycle so that we are beginning to see the real, as we come out of the pandemic and bounce back from that, but also the real strength of that collaborative work in developing instructional strategies and leveraging the curriculum that we have to get the best results for our students. It is our intention to make sure that all of our students hit that goal, that key indicator of reading at grade level by the end of grade three. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there comments or questions? Director Miller?
I can start, that's fine, yes. Thank you for this this evening. Can we go to the slide, Spring Reading Proficiency, the table with the cohorts? Just clarify, the assessment that's given at each level there is an assessment for that level, correct? It's not this, okay. And then the next couple of slides, the impact of Hagerty. The implication that we're given here is that Hagerty is having a different effect on the students being assessed. I'm a little, again, remind me where we've deployed Hagerty and how much we have?
So Hagerty is in its second year as a pilot. Harriet Bishop is completing its second year with kindergarten and first grade, and they have piloted their VPK students as well. In Sky Oaks and Hidden Valley, they have, this is their first year of the pilot in both kindergarten and first grade. Our intention is to deploy it in kindergarten and first grade at all sites, and we'll be also looking at additional VPK sites in order to provide that phonemic awareness.
My concern is when we show data like this, are the two populations representative of each other? You know, so obviously, the not-Hagerty group would be much larger. So there might be some normalization to some numbers in there just because of the size and the students involved. And also, I'm just curious if the Hagerty-not-Hagerty groups are equitable with representation of free and reduced lunch, English as a second language? The other barriers often come with challenges to the meeting proficiency.
Right, and so both Harriet Bishop and Hidden Valley have some of our highest percentages of students who are multilingual learners. There are comparable numbers of students who qualify and are eligible for free and reduced lunch at those sites, and in fact, Sky Oaks is one of our highest qualifying, as is Hidden Valley.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all for my questions. Thank you.
I just had comments because I just love seeing the data that shows how Hagerty is working. I just remember the presentations that we heard, and that was just very exciting to hear how it's making a difference. And I'm very excited to hear that we are going to implement it in the rest of our elementary schools. I think it's very impactful, and I just, I remember from the presentation that it just, it clearly is making a difference. So to now know that it will be in all the elementary schools, I think, is very exciting. And I'm excited to see what the data then will look like after it's in all of the elementary schools. So I just really appreciate you guys bringing the data forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hume. Yeah, just a couple of comments and a question. Can we go back to the slide with the FastBridge data? Thank you. So the comment, if I understood correctly, was that we have about 50 or more of our students, 50% or more, at or above grade level, right?
That's correct.
So, big picture, of course, there's a lot that we want for our students. We want them to be happy. We want them to be healthy and engaged. And of course, tonight is focused on learning and reading. And in terms of reading, we obviously still have, our work cut out for us. I'm really hopeful because of everything that we've heard in past presentations about Hagerty. So looking forward to the next report. In terms of what you bring forward next time, it'll be particularly interesting to, and I'm sure you're probably already planning this, to be able to understand the progress of our students that have been exposed to Hagerty within the different student groups, because I know that, you know, consistently, and we've talked about this before, we're underserving consistently our Latinx students, our multileader, multilingual students, and that's something that we all, we all know, we're all working toward. So that's something I'd be interested in understanding next time you come. And Dr. Lowe, I think I remember you said this last time, and I just wanted to check. You said with Hagerty, there's little to no implementation dip?
No expressions.
Oh.
It was math expressions.
Was that math expressions? I'm mixing things up. Okay. So do we expect an implementation dip with Hagerty?
We didn't see that with the first-time implementation at Sky Oaks and Hidden Valley. We saw that consistent growth for them.
Okay, awesome. Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I just had one. On the, could you just talk? I'm sure their entire academic career is based on this, so I don't, I just, like a really short explanation of the difference between the MCA results, which I think showed proficiency for last year's third graders at about 34, 35%, and the one that's currently on the board that shows 2022 third graders were at 53%. So there's a pretty big difference between those two numbers for the same, presumably the same cohort.
So we have differences in the testing environment for students. Third grade is the second time, or the third time that those students have taken the FastBridge computer adaptive test. And for the MCA, it is the first time that they have participated in that, and so it is a new experience for them. We try to prepare them in as many ways as we can, but it is a new experience for them. It also speaks to the level of alignment, and that's the work that Coordinator McDonald has been working with, with that alignment to our core curriculum. The alignment with the FastBridge has been much tighter. And now that we're looking at that revised grade-level guarantees, those learner outcomes for each grade level, we anticipate that those to be better aligned with the assessment itself.
Thank you. All right. I think that's it for this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Tonight, we'll be recognizing the achievements and contributions of several students and teams. We'll start by honoring our outgoing student representative to the school board, Ava Drobnik, for her service to this board, to Burnsville High School, and to District 191 as a whole. The role of student representative to the board is an important one, with each representative bringing their own skills, personality, and interest to the job. Ava has certainly done that this year, and we are all better because of it. Ava has helped me and this entire board stay informed and connected to the happenings at Burnsville High School through her regular reports. More importantly, she's brought insight into the overall mood and morale of the student body, sharing both concerns and excitement to be sure we have full perspective as we consider the issues that come before us. Away from board meetings, Ava has also provided valuable leadership in this role, including by helping organize students to develop the district's new profile of a 191 learner and by providing input as the district prepared to hire a new principal for BHS this spring. I understand that Ava plans to attend the University of Minnesota Duluth this fall and major in exercise and rehabilitation sciences. So I just want to say thank you. I think we've all learned a lot from the perspectives that you've shared this year. I appreciate your willingness to speak up and to ask questions and to share your voice throughout the year. I know you're going to go on to great things in the future, and I definitely want to consider you, as I think it was Director Miller said at the last meeting, to consider running for school board or other elected positions in the future. So, thank you very much, Ava. All right, moving on, Director Chris, or Director, Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Dr. Bill Summers, interim principal, are here to introduce the student board representative for the 2324 school year. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. In accordance with Policy 299, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Bill Summers and Cody Huang, our new student board representative. Dr. Summers?
I also want to thank Ava, who's a straight shooter, tells you what you think, you know, what she thinks. And I also applaud the board for having student voice in the decisions. Because so often, we sometimes, well, we think this is a good idea. Well, what does Ava think? Because she's the one that has to live with it. So, thank you, Ava, for representing us very well. I should also tell you the process. We had three or four people that interviewed five, I think, five or six students for this position because it is critical and it's extremely valuable for us to have the board understand that. So the process, we had interviews and a vote, obviously. And I think what's interesting about Cody is that not only is he very active in the AAPI, American Asian Pacific Islander Affinity Group, but he's also, you know, a very valuable member in terms of being on the student council and other activities. So he has a wide range. He's also really honest, and that's what you got with Ava, and that's what you're going to get with Cody. And I am proud and excited to introduce Cody Huang, next year's student representative to the board.
Welcome, Cody.
Did you guys hear anything?
You get the next 15 minutes.
Well, I'd like to first thank Dr. Summers and Ms. Noble and also Ava for giving me the opportunities for interview for this position and finally making it. So I look forward to speaking with you all sooner or later for the next school year and hope to make some amazing changes around here and make Burnsville one heck of a city and one heck of a district as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda is Student Athletics and Activities Recognitions. And I'd like to invite Activities Director and Associate Principal Bill Heim to the podium to join us in celebrating our students' accomplishments so far this year. And just one note, as you come up for your recognition, we are going to take a quick picture with the board, and then you can go back to your seat at that point. We'll try to keep it moving as quickly as possible, so I know there's a lot of people here.
Thank you, Board Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, and members of the school board.
Is there a button that raises this up here?
I wish.
So I appreciate this opportunity to share some of the wonderful accomplishments of our students and teams in District 191. Each of the people honored here tonight were recognized at the state, national, and even international level. I'm amazed by the talent, dedication, and character of our students as they show and participate in our activities and athletics throughout this school year. They represent themselves, their peers, and our community in such a positive light, and I'm so proud of all of their accomplishments. I am constantly reminded how much more they know compared to me. to me, as I've been surrounded by these kids every day. It's just incredible. So, one thing to note tonight, we'll be celebrating accomplishments from this past winter and spring season. With that, we'll introduce our first honoree, representing Blaze Wrestling. So, Coach Bill Soderholm, Clayton Holt, and Jack O'Brien could come up here, please, along with Mambo. Senior Mambo Zoni won the 220-pound title in the Section 2 AAA individual tournament on February 25th at Lakeville North and qualified for the Class 3A state competition, which was held March 3rd through 4th at the Excel Energy Center. Heading into state appearance for the first time, Mambo was ranked eighth with a record of thirty-two and four. He was the lone Blaze wrestler at state. Mambo made it to the semifinals, ultimately finishing fifth overall. Coach Bill Soderholm says Mambo is a great example of what a student athlete should be. Mambo is an honest, reliable, and responsible young man. Mambo has won Self Suburban Conference Academic Awards each year, and this year, he was named fourth Neatine Academic Team Member. Mambo served as captain for the past two years. Congratulations to Mambo on your success. How's this?
Oh, wow.
Okay, next is Olympic weightlifting. We need Coach Justin Lurfo, Lucky Folsaref, and Andy Grahn. If you could come up here with any members you have from your team. Come on up. So, Dave Nick Bruce. At the Minnesota Olympic Weightlifting State Meet, which was held mid-March in Cannon Falls, five students blazed the trails to the platform. Sophomore Scott Frobe was crowned state champion in 55 kilograms. Senior Sidney Lamott took second place in 81. Freshman Carly Ramat took second place at 55 kilograms. Senior Christian Savangse took second place at 109. Junior Jayden Ellis took third place in the 109 kilograms. About the team's season, Justin Lurfo said, "Our Olympic weightlifters represented Burnsville as well as the state Olympic Weightlifting Meet. I'm so proud of the effort they gave each and every day. Our seniors have led by example all year and will be truly missed. These lifters just keep raising the bar." Congratulations to the Blaze Olympic Weightlifting. Girls Nordic Skiing, Coaches Gabby Ayers and Zach Friedman. Is Kalen here tonight either?
I don't see Kalen.
All right. Well, we're going to brag about them right now. Junior Kalen Ambul represented Burnsville shot at the Nordic Ski Team on the state trails this season. Kalen qualified in Pursuit at the Section 1 Meet in February at Highland Park Reserve in Louisville, finishing eighth overall. Pursuit is a combination of times from both the 5,000-meter freestyle and classical races. Out of 112 state participants, Kalen finished 50th. Congratulations, Kalen. Adapted floor hockey, David DiO. Is David here? All right. Well, congratulations to the Blaze Cats, an adapted floor hockey team, which includes Burnsville student Carly Sorenson. Is Carly here? All right. The team was crowned champions in 2023 in the Minnesota State Adapted Floor Hockey Tournament. The Cats defeated defending champs New Prague 15 to 6 in a really tough game. We want to congratulate team members Andy Bowie and Jack Flynn, both seniors, and South Park Thomas Truberyan for cheering on their varsity teammates at state. It only gets better. Here we go. Badminton. Coach Anthony Wen, if you could come on up. Coach, and any of the badminton players, here we go. It's a game we've all played in the backyard, but this is a little different level. So, congratulations to the Blaze Badminton Team. The team placed second at the state tournament held May 16 through 18 at Edina High School. The number-three Burnsville squad, which upset number-two St. Paul Highland Park by a score of 4 to 3 in the other semifinal, was attempting to win the team title for the first time since winning three in a row from 96 to 99. The Blaze fell to number-four at Edina in the championship game at the state individual tournament on May 18 in singles competition. Maddie Blackburn placed second place, and Karina Benson placed eighth. In doubles, Sherlyn Rojas and Jasmine Tran placed third, and Leah Marie and Lisa Genus placed sixth. Congrats Blaze Badminton. Next is our Athena Award. Coaches Ryan Hadorf and David Shaw. Coaches here tonight is Shauna here. Well, I was going to say a little bit about Shauna here. Senior Shauna Ruha received the 2023 Athena Award, which recognizes outstanding high school female student athletes for their athletic accomplishments. Shauna is a two-sport athlete, tennis and basketball, with a total of eight varsity letters, including five letters in basketball and three in tennis. She was named MVP of this year's basketball team. Additionally, she was part of the first doubles team in Burnsville's girls' history to qualify for the state tournament. Tennis Coach Ryan Hadorf said Shauna is a talented athlete, but her work, athletic leadership, intelligence, humility, and first-team mentality elevate her to a much higher level than her talent alone. Head Coach David Shaw for basketball says Shauna is very deserving of the award. Shauna leads by example and does not make up excuses. Next fall, she is headed to Minot State University on a basketball scholarship and plans to major in nursing. Next, we need our chess program. I know we have people coming up here, Coach Brian Ribnik and Coach Mark Burtnick. Niklet Knights. This is not Coach Ribnik's first rodeo. The Niklet Middle School chess team, called the Niklet Knights, was crowned national champs in the K-12 Blitz Tournament of the U.S. Chess Federation National Championships, held April 20, 20 through 23 in Austin, Texas. This is Niklet's first national title. More than 400 teams and approximately 1,250 players from across the country competed in this tournament. Leading the way for the Knights was John Blommer, who finished 13th place. Other scorers included Theo Deep, Emery Girkey, and Sammy Porta. A lot of chess here. In the classical time control portion of the tournament, most of the team competed in the under-700-made set division and finished second place by half a point. Scores, Mariel Johnson, who was undefeated and finished third place, Ben Davis fourth, Sammy Porta 17th, and Nimfong Lee. In the under-900 section, Levi Spitsnagle was undefeated and finished fifth place. In the under-1100 division, Theo Deep placed 11th. Other team members are Torin Girkey, Gabe Torgrude, Alex Rosso, Luna Hernandez-Tyngsen, John Wen, Miguel Kirkoff, Marty Pritchard, Natalie Wen. The team is coached by Brian Ribnik and Mark Burtnick. Coach Ribnik said the team showed no fear as they faced much higher-rated teams and players. The 12 players that represented Niklet and of the Blitz played a total of 144 games, and each one, they battled their hearts out. They walked back to their hotel rooms late at night with concern, as they didn't have, you know, as much of a stellar round. But however, when final results were posted, our shout-outs from, could be heard from way down in South Texas, always in Minnesota. Congratulations, Niklet Knights.
Congratulations.
I'll call it a dynasty. All right. Next, we'll have our robotics FRC.
I love those flight pants.
Coached by Crystal Point, Sean Lenhart, Scott Wackow, Craig Huber, Tony Peters, Dave Peters, and Jack Lyons, along with everybody else in their orange shirts.
You guys need the flight pants.
To Blaze Robotics, they compete, and they practice, rather, in an area of the high school called the... It's a whole part of the school that they, they kind of take control of, and they make this magic happen. Ranked number one in the state of Minnesota, placing fifth at the 2023 First Robotics Championship, held in April in Texas. At the World Championships, the Blaze won the Newton Division along with the Imagery Award. What an incredible accomplishment to land one of the top spots. This season, Blaze Robotics was the winner at the Heartland Regional Tournament in Kansas, held in March, and repeated the accomplishment at the Central Missouri Regional the following weekend, where they placed first and earned an engineering award. Blaze Robotics also competed in the state tournament at the University of Minnesota in Twin Cities on May 6. Out of 36 teams, somehow, the Blaze ended up in only second place. Team members include Will Mo, Kaien Ponzio, Ethan Jacobson, Aiden Goldberdon, Aiden Peterson, Carter Vannell, Katie Wen, Anthony Wen, and Seamus Boos. It was an amazing run this team had. We're so proud of them, of their, of their performance and all they have accomplished. We have more robotics. Our robotics FTC coached by Craig Huber and Adam Jacobson. Congratulations also to the Robotics FTC Collateral Damage Team 7588, coached by Adam Jacobson. At the Egan Tournament in November, Collateral Damage placed first and received second place for the Inspire Award. The team also won first place at the Burnsville Tournament in January. The High Goldfish Team 17221, coached by Craig Huber, took first place at the Maple Grove Tournament in December. Robotics teams included Ian Park, Josephong, Legas, Owen Skapansky, Adam Jacobson, Ethan Jacobson, Gerald Johnson, Audra Johnson, and Rashawn Bathum.
She was trying to get the elevator.
Next up is our Science Fair, coached by Mike K. Miller. Thirteen Burnsville High School students competed at the state Science Fair after presenting their research papers and projects at the Twin Cities Regional Science Fair in early March. Sophomore Sarah Zamudio qualified for an all-expense-paid trip to the International Science and Engineering Fair in Dallas, as well as earning more awards than anyone at the entire fair. In addition, BHS students earned three of the only 24 spots available to Minnesota students in the North Central Region. Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, which includes Minnesota, North Dakota, and South Dakota. State qualifiers for the paper completion were Ajmal Abiriman, Lauren Bachmeier, Saran Bogali, Lily Hato, Emma Klug, Owen Crick, Isabella Legorio, Evelyn Martinez, Jane McGuire, Caitlin Patterson, and Nuria Warfa. Eleven of the BHS students have participated in the backboard competition, with two advancing to the state competition, and two chosen as alternates for the state competition. Ajmal Abiriman advanced to state. Camila Cabrera-Zagni got the Stockholm Water Prize state alternate. Juan Esteban Castillo Villar, Stockholm Water Prize state alternate. Jordan Flores-Lara, state Stockholm Water Prize state alternate. Ella O'Hammond, U.S. Metric Award Association, Stockholm Junior Water Prize state alternate. And Sarah Zamudio, a lot going on here for Sarah, advanced to the state competition. She received Air Force Award, Meneto Catering Award, 3M Personal Safety Award, which was a $100 prize, Association of Women Geosciences Award, advanced to Genius Olympiad, National Geographic Society, Requal Sustainable Award, United States Agency for International Development Award, and advanced to the International Science and Engineering Finals, all expenses paid. I couldn't miss one. Our speech team, Coach Klein. Come on up. The Burnsville Speech Team is part of Section 6AA, which is regarded as the hardest section in the state of Minnesota and one of the most competitive in the nation. Seniors Lexi Cornolo and Sehun Ibrahim both competed in the discussion category and made the top seven in preliminary results. In the final round, Lexi placed first, and Sehun came in second, which qualified them for our state tournament. At the Minnesota State Tournament, held in April, Lexi and Sehun tied for ninth place. Team advisor Brendan Klein said Sehun had a tremendous year, making it to the final rounds, at first two invitationals, and placing second in our section tournament. Judges found Sehun's ability to organize solutions and ideas into coherent, succinct proposal as a real strength in her area of excellence. Excellence. About Lexi, Mr. Klein said Lexi had, by many measures, the most successful discussion season out of any competitor in our whole state. Lexi made it to the final rounds in all but one tournament, and got no lower than third place in each round. Lexi received all conference honors for the Self Suburban Conference and took first place in our section tournament. Mr. Klein added, "I'm incredibly proud of both of the students and thrilled that their hard work and talent has been recognized at the highest level of our sport." We need our esports, led by Mr. Shimpshock, and a couple of the players. Come on up. Bring them all, bring them all up. Cool. Come on, guys. Along with their hard work. Jeremiah said he wants to win first place and put some kind of like a gain rate in that thing, right Jeremiah? That's just the thing we got. Give it your own name. Call it the Jeremiah name. All right. So, both of the BHS esports Fortnite duo teams, A&amp;B, participated in the state LAM tournament, held back in May on 13th and 14th, which consisted of the top 32 four-play duo teams from across Minnesota. Team A ended up getting top eight, and Team B ended up bringing home a third-place trophy. Team A members included Oben Osai, Orsami Huzain, and Ariel Acosta. Team B members include Christian Gamboa, Sahira Lee, Juan Esteban Castillo Villar. BHS esports Minecraft Smite and Varsity Rocket Teams also participated in the state LAM tournament, held in May on 21 and 22. Minecraft Dead Wars 4 and 14 ended up getting our top eight. The Smite Team ended up getting a third-place trophy, and Rocket Team got second. Minecraft Team members Max Hair, Wyatt Hol, Kate Hogan, Jayden Montano, and Nathan Pearson. The Smite Team includes Cash Akhavak, Kenshin Herr, Max Herr, Moses Snow. The Smite team includes Cash Akhambah, Kenshin Herr, Max Herr, Moses Snow, Ethan O'Neil, and Julian Perrin. The Rocket Team includes Gerald Carter, Jack Frame, Diego McCollum, Aiden Menke, and Kobe Tao. Congratulations on your performance at state.
Thank you very much and congratulations to all of you. Next, we will receive a report about the Foundation 191 grant recipients. Margaret Hinton, Foundation 191 is presenting. Welcome, Margaret.
Thank you.
Margaret, am I going to advance the slides for you?
Absolutely. Can you hear?
I don't know if it's turned on.
My name is Margaret Hinton, a member of District 191 Foundation. Board members, thank you for this opportunity to present the 2023-2024 Grant Awards to staff members in District 191. This spring, Foundation 191 received 34 requests for grants from district staff. Grants are awarded to various projects and activities that are not otherwise covered under the school budget. A total of 23 grants out of 34 were selected by the Grant Selection Committee. Foundation 191 once again partnered with the Jill Hadorf Memorial Fund to award over $25,000 in grants this year. Based on the data submitted in each application, it is estimated that 4,000 to 5,000 District 191 students will be impacted by these projects and activities, with many projects extending impact over many years. We're going to start with Burnsville High School. Is Samantha Schwanke or Olivia Bramer here? MSCA Conference submitted by Samantha Schwanke. This grant covers the registration fee of six Burnsville High School guidance counselors to attend a professional development conference covering the following topics: mental health, LGBTQ+, technology, and non-native English speakers. The second Burnsville High School grant was the accessibility in the kitchen submitted by Olivia Bramer. This project will help special education students learn functional cooking skills. Moving on to Burnsville Alternative High School. Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support, better known as PBIS. This reward was submitted by Lori Nagman. This grant will provide positive incentives for Burnsville Alternative's high school students. Is Lori here? The second award was to Global Arts and Loom Weaving Project submitted by Kate Brown. This grant will provide 20 looms and art supplies with an emphasis on color and craftsmanship. The third award, Tu'Tu'Paz, is Let's Get Organized submitted by Amy Hill. This grant will provide new binders and other school supplies for at-risk avid students. And the next award, Physical Education Programs submitted by Kevin Morrissey. This grant will allow for purchase of additional new basketballs for the Fayette Program. Moving on to Eagle Bridge Middle School. A grant of 3D Printing submitted by Emily Beckman. This grant will enhance the computer-automated design program with the purchase of eight mini 3D printers. A second award, PBIS Game Center submitted by Jennifer Boer. This grant will create new game center reward stations. And again, another award, Epic Online Reading submitted by Teresa Michelson. This grant covers a subscription cost for a supplemental online reading website. Moving on to Niklet Middle School. The Avid Binder Hospital submitted by Amy Smalling and Steve Orth. This grant provides necessary binders and supplies to students, and you've probably heard about this last year, too. Moving on to Ron Elementary, the collaborative workspace submitted by Kara Slattery. Am I seeing Kara? Kara, stand up, stand up. Kara Slattery and Erin Hardl. This grant will create fifth graders' workspace design to inspire teamwork, productivity, and relationships. Yeah, thank you, Kara. The next award for Ron Elementary is Rachel Elliott? No, okay. This grant provides materials, I got kind of a kick about this. Okay, this grant provides materials for a calming center, a take-a-break spot to help with self-regulation. And now moving on to Edward Neal Elementary. Is Alicia Winnie here? Flexible cozy learning environment submitted by Alicia Winnie. This grant will create a safe and engaging learning environment for students. The second award to Edward Neal, Enhancements for the Classroom submitted by Misbah Harani. This grant will provide social, emotional play tools and resources. And then the last for Edward Neal is Happy Hobbies submitted by Annie Egdal. This grant is an introduction to hobbies that will offer a positive outlet for expression. And now moving on to Sky Oaks Elementary. The Growing Social Emotional Learning submitted by Amy Hansen. This grant provides supplemental tools and resources for the special education team to engage many students. Second, the Dramatic Play Materials submitted by Maya Santos. This grant will provide pretend play and multicultural dress-up clothing to practice real-life skills. The third award, Drawing Your Minds by Mary Beth Plashco. This grant supports the science of reading enhancement materials. Then, Classroom Books submitted by Angie Kochman. This grant also supports the science of reading enhancement materials. Skyflyer submitted by Hannah King. This grant will provide leadership group materials to complete a Cards for Kids service project. And now to Community Education. Bowls for Brain Power submitted by Pam Voit. This program supports hunger relief to food-insecure families in our district. The second for Community Education is the Dramatic Play Center submitted by Misbah This grant will add a play store and puppet theater for students. Did I miss somebody coming from this? And then finally, Adult Basic Education, the GED Student Scholarship submitted by Susan Edlundson. This grant will cover the cost of GED subject tests for 10 adult students. Congratulations to all the teachers who submitted applications and thank you, board, and thank you, Foundation 191 and the Hadorf family for everything that we do for our kids and for our staff.
Thank you, Margaret. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Director Alt.
Just a brief one. I appreciate all the time and thought and effort that the board and your supporters put into this decision, and it's always wonderful to see how you really make sure to touch our schools across the district and the different programs and to see ABE touch this year with funding, that's just wonderful. So, thank you for being so thoughtful with the funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I'll just echo, having been the board rep to Foundation 191 my first couple of years on the board, I know how much work you all put into this and to the scholarships as well, which were recognized a couple of weeks ago at the high school, and thank you. It really makes a big difference for the students and the teachers and the other staff in the district, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we will receive a report about QComp from Katie Ness, improvement coach and QComp coordinator.
No one wanted to stay for the home waiting.
Apparently not. They're missing all the good stuff.
So empty.
Well, we're excited that you're here, Katie. They don't know what they're missing, right?
You know what? It's okay that the room cleared out. Board Chair, Directors, and Superintendent Battle, thank you so much for having me here this evening. Truly, what a great night to be here, right? My name is Katie Ness, and I am the QComp Coordinator as well as Continuous Improvement Coach for our district. The Quality Compensation Law, known as QComp, has four components, those components being career ladder, achievement, and advancement options, job-embedded professional development, teacher evaluation, and professional pay. The continuous improvement cycle is followed throughout the program's implementation of these four components. I'm here today to present to you the findings of our annual review and share recommendations we have for the 2023-2024 school year. This year, we collected data from probationary and tenured staff, administrators on implementation, impact on instruction, and impact on student achievement. Our district has eight continuous improvement coaches, serving over 600 licensed staff at 16 sites. The CICs have continued to focus on equitable practices when working with all 191 staff. Staff continue to cite that their reflective conversations that center around these equitable practices and the actionable plans they create have positive impacts on their instruction. The CIC team will continue to seek out additional ways to provide opportunities for all staff to grow professionally and be responsive to the diversity of the students that they serve. Building Leadership Team members felt that their leadership roles helped them to reflect on and improve their own practice. They felt that the opportunity to conduct peer observations along with the additional mentor training that they received in August helped further develop their leadership skills at their sites. Collaborative teams continue to feel that their work impacts their practices along with student achievement. Collaborative teams continue to focus their implementation efforts on avid strategies, the new elementary math curriculum implementation, social-emotional learning instruction, and culturally proficient school system strategies. Collaborative teams also cited the continued opportunities for time to collaborate with teachers in specialized areas as impactful on instructional practices and students' learning experiences. Largely both tenured and probationary staff, along with administrators, see the overall impact their observations have on their practice. With continued implementation of the collegial conversation format, surveyed staff express that the job-embedded professional development specific to equitable classroom practices, the opportunity to implement action steps, and reflect on the process as a whole, had a positive impact on both their learning and the learning of their students. This year, with the help of seed money from the Pelsby Grant, Katie Nelson, Kim Zandeg Hamer, both representing special education, and myself, were able to focus efforts on creating a more robust mentoring program. This year, we had 79 new educators to our district, served by 68 new educator mentors. Of these 68 mentors, 43 were building leadership team members. Specific efforts were made to support our new educators working with students who require specialized direct instruction. The 25 non-building leadership team members serving as mentors helped provide these new educators with the job-specific skills and knowledge needed to perform their daily tasks. All mentors received formal mentor training in August that covered building understanding and the supports necessary in the following areas: culturally proficient school systems and supporting new educators of color, effective communication, understanding of the day-to-day processes at both the site and district level, and ways to provide emotional support and encouragement. We provided an adjusted New Educator Workshop Week schedule, taking one full day from the New Educator Workshop Week and place that takes place in August, and dispersing those hours throughout the school year to provide professional development that was delivered by CICs and other teacher leaders. Those topics were goal-setting, technology use and integration, PBIS and classroom supports, engagement strategies supporting our multilingual students, and for those in specialized roles, topics were how to fill out those special education forms, due process, communicating with general education teachers, and setting students with IEPs up for success in the classroom. Throughout this school year, we gathered feedback from our mentees on supports offered from both their mentors and the new educator professional development sessions. Based on this feedback, we modified and adjusted to continue to support the vast needs of all of our mentees. With a variety of new educators in our district this year, ranging from an early childhood parent educator all the way up to classroom teachers and special education teachers, 97% of our new educators felt supported by their mentors, and 95% felt that the support resulted in an increased ability and level of comfort to execute their job responsibilities on a day-to-day basis. Here's a quote from one of our mentees. "This feedback exemplifies what we're trying to accomplish: building connections in a supportive community, guidance that helps those that are new thrive in their roles, and personalized supports that meet the individual needs of each of our new educators." Based on the survey results collected in this year's QComp review, we're making the following recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year. The Danielson Framework for Teaching was designed to enhance professional practice. Recognizing that student needs evolve and that teachers need to evolve alongside of them, the Danielson Framework, our group revised the framework to better represent the needs of today's culturally responsive classrooms. We recommend ongoing calibration with the current Danielson rubrics for administrators while they also gain familiarity with this new rubric language. CICs will use the new rubric when working with tenured, non-evaluative staff to gain familiarity with the rubric and then begin to introduce it to staff. The revised mentoring program has shown to be instrumental in recruiting, supporting, and maintaining our new educators. We would like to continue focusing our efforts on developing and refining this program and look for ways to continue to offer supports for our new educators that are entering into years two and three of their teaching careers with our district. Finally, as the coordinator of our QComp program, I've had the opportunity to partner with Jamie Howe, our MTSS and Title One Coordinator, along with Morgan McDowell, our MTSS TOSA. Through this partnership, we've worked to align the Minnesota multi-tiered Systems of Support Guidance and Framework with current district teams that are supported by our QComp funding, those being our Building Leadership Teams and our Collaborative Teams. This year, we've started with fidelity checks at the site level, which are intended to bring structure and accountability for team effectiveness. Next year, we will use the data collected to support the functions of these teams and align our practices to promote district-connected teams. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from board members?
So I just want to ask a clarifying question.
Yes.
So is QComp, is that for all teachers?
It is for all licensed staff, yes.
Okay, so can any teacher have a mentor? Or is it, because I know you were talking specifically about some newer teachers, but are all teachers, is it available to all teachers to have a mentor, even tenured teachers?
That's a great question. So our efforts this year were really focused in on supporting our first-year new-to-district educators. Through our system, we have building leadership teams already established, so part of their role would be mentoring new teachers and tenured teachers that need support. We also, as continuous improvement coaches, work closely with administrators and buildings, and oftentimes, if there's a tenured teacher that needs support, it would be the coach in the building. support, it would be the coach in the building that would offer that support.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Director Alt?
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple clarifying questions. Looking at the report itself, there was, and you had touched on this in your discussion as well, talking about the collaborative process and, you know, increase increasing consistency in instruction. Can you speak to that? You know, for example, if we have two students, one, each of them is in a different science classroom, how would this process ensure that each of those students who has a different science teacher can be assured to have similar exposure to rigor and content and so on and so forth?
Thank you for that question. So as part of a collaborative team, we focus on the process of what do we want students to know? So as that team comes together, so science teachers in the same department, all the way down to, you know, first grade teams, right? You'll focus on what do we want students to know? How are we going to know they will know it? What do we do if they don't know? And what do we do if they already know it? That's kind of the framework of these discussions. And with that, and what informs our, you know, decision-making is we look at data, whether it's, as we heard about earlier, Fastbridge, whether it's MCA data, whether it's pre and post tests. We look at that data and kind of base our decisions on that and just have collaborative conversations. We provide discussion protocols, decision-making protocols to help that. And really, this work with the alignment with MTSS is going to help us tighten up those systems even further. Part of our review, we look at mid-year reflection data, and we also do end-of-year reflection data, and then we present that to building sites, so building leadership teams. So for example, today I sat down with an administrator, presented that data, and we look at, okay, what are our goals as a building team to support our collaborative teams next year? So we kind of call them linked teams. How are all of our teams linked together?
So within those conversations, you're saying it would become evident if students are, you know, kind of diverging
Yes.
in a particular area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
And then there was another question. In recommendations, we recommend regular calibration of Danielson components with administrators to support inter-rater reliability of the evaluation process. We recommend that professional development among administrators and coaches include calibration and support inter-rater reliability. Can you speak more to these recommendations?
Yes. I know, it's a mouthful.
It is a mouthful, yeah.
It's really important that we have inter-rater reliability in our process across the district. So that means that your experience being evaluated is going to be similar, whatever elementary school you are. It also calibrates scoring. So if you are in evaluative, what that might look like, right? If you do a calibration walk, administrators will look at a component, specific criteria that they're going to be observing. They walk through classrooms, they write down evidence, and they score it. Then they come back and have a discussion of the evidence they have and how they scored it and why. And your goal through that is to weed out bias, recognize bias if it's there, have discussions, and ensure that your scores are as close as possible. Our plan for next year is inter-rater reliability with that, but then also looking at some of the new rubric language that Danielson has put out so that there can be a kind of a pilot and a base knowledge instead of it just being sprung to us, you know, the following thought.
Because it's really the new rubric that's, that this is talking about, because we probably already have, with the exception of possibly new evaluators, we already have that inter-rater reliability built into the system because we've been doing this for so long.
We do. And yet, we still want to continue to do it
Right.
because of our new
Right.
administrators and administrators moving levels, right?
Sure.
Because observing, you know, in a middle school may be different than observing at a high school. So we continue our current practices along with kind of, you know, weaving them into our new practices.
Awesome. Thank you.
Your bet.
Anyone else?
Just want to make the comment.
Director Connor?
Excuse me. Just a curious question. Is this only specific to our district, or do you know if other districts are using this program?
Q Comp is offered statewide.
Okay.
We applied for it back in, I believe, 2014 and were accepted. So there's a number of districts that are on a waitlist to be a part of, of the program. But, you know, neighboring districts, we do have some. I'm part of a metro area coordinators committee, and we get together every few months to discuss kind of what each district is doing and, and take back ideas.
Great. Because I think this is really a good, comprehensive program, you know, for teachers. Back when I was working in the school system, I think a lot of teachers would have benefited from this, would have loved it, and I really like the strategies you use for it, too, so.
Thank you.
Good.
Any others? All right. I have just one. Going back to the mentors. You mentioned in your presentation, there were 68 mentors this year, which were 43 BOT members and 25 additional staff. I'm curious to know, learn a little bit more about if there are guidelines or rules around who can or cannot be a mentor.
So we start with our building leadership team because they are selected by building principals to serve as building leaders, and it's part of kind of their roles and responsibilities to serve as mentors in their sites. We also recognize there are staff members that are hired that are in specialized roles: nurses, school psychologists, social workers. And a building leadership member, team member, that is maybe a classroom teacher, might not serve as, they might be able to help in the building, but as far as job responsibilities would be hard. So that's where we go, kind of the additional, we seek out other individuals in the district that could serve as mentors. And then those mentors also go through a training that is provided.
Got it. So a third-grade teacher wouldn't necessarily be a mentor for a school nurse, I think you mentioned.
Right.
For example, it'd probably be a nurse from another building, perhaps.
We really try to get job-alike.
Yeah.
In some cases, if you, for example, an elementary fiaed teacher, in some cases, we ask a preference. Would you prefer someone within your building, or would you like another fiaed teacher within the district? And oftentimes, it's both. We'll have a building leader member kind of mentor them, but also have someone else in the district.
Okay, great. That was my last question. So I think we're all set. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Next, we will receive a report about fundraising from Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Just a brief report for you. Policy 511 Student Fundraising requires a report twice a year. We ran reports from the e-commerce system from September 1, 2022, to May 1, 2023. Monthly reports are also provided to the board recognizing donations. Below is a fundraising report that includes the activity, types of fundraisers, timing, purposes, and results. I won't read through all of those. And then further information is provided according to our policy, which we presented earlier this year as well.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, I will say thank you, Stacy. Next up, we have, do board members have any reports about board committees, appointments, or school assignments? So we'll start with the Policy Review Committee.
I have no report from the Policy Committee. We did not have a quorum this week, so we are looking at meeting next month.
All right. Negotiations?
Negotiations does not have anything to report at the moment. We have not yet had any meetings to report on.
All right. And legislative?
Legislative, we did not meet, but we know that things have passed at the, at the Capitol. So I, until it's signed, I won't say third time to charm, but I believe third time to charm.
So it's still not signed?
I don't think so.
Signed many today.
Did he?
Yeah. Yeah, we're not sure, but.
Probably got to rest between signatures, right?
Yes. So I'm hoping our legislative exemption will be on that signature.
All right. Are there any other updates that anyone has to share this evening?
Yes, 917.
Go for it.
So on May 2, intermediate district 917 met. And so some of the things coming out of that meeting, they are recognizing all of the appreciation that happens in the month of May. So they put forth a resolution for teacher appreciation, for school nurse appreciation, for interpreter appreciation, and Speech Pathologist Day. So that all came on the board meeting. But then on top of that, the board is going to go through probably one of its selfie eval that I don't think it had done in a while. So the school board will be going through that. And then they are also starting to adopt the "I love you guys" that we adopted here. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other board reports this evening? Director Connor and then Director Miller.
Okay. This is from AMSC. We had our directors meeting on May 5, and it was regarding the, all the social issues of education versus school STEM, COVID, and student safety, teacher support, all those more curriculum issues. A lot of the listeners just voiced their opinions on a lot of the school issues and the funds of how all these programs are going to be paid for, including the free lunches. Some of them thought that was going to be a mistake because you can't have everything. You can't have paid family leave and, and then free lunches and then, because they think, they feel, or not they feel, this is a fact, that we've had the largest grant of funds for education in history, and we just have to pick and choose. We have to really prioritize the issues that we can afford. And so this is what the whole meeting was about. A lot of people just putting in their ideas and discussions around that, and it was very good. And then they just wrapped up with a lot of the proposals that are on the table that will pass in the Senate and then the ones that may not, and encourage you to contact your legislators about all these issues. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Miller?
Yes, just a quick note about the Burnsville Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame Committee has met a couple of times. There are nominations have been set. Unfortunately, I don't have an entire list in front of me, so I will save that for a later point. But the ceremony will take place on Friday, October 13, during the football game 2023. So I will bring forward the nomination list at a later time.
All right. Thank you. Last call for updates, reports. All right. Then we will move on. Next, we'll move on to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. The first item we are being asked to adopt this evening is a resolution approving purchase, the purchase agreement between ISD 191 and Syndica LLP. Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, is presenting the next three agenda items, in fact. So welcome, Stacy, and welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, board members. Again, bringing to you tonight a recommendation that the board approve a resolution approving the purchase agreement between 191 and Syndica LLP. Before we move into the resolution, I am going to ask Stacy Kilving from Ellers to just kind of review how we got to this point, identify the key elements of the proposal, talk a little bit about that, and answer any questions that you may have about the process before we move forward.
Thank you, Chair, Directors. It's great to see you tonight. As you recall, at our April 27 session that we had, we discussed the purchase of about 1.1 acres in the southeast corner of the site here. That's one of your parcels or areas that you were looking of excess property that you have potentially for sale to the private sector for future development. You were approached by MWF Properties to purchase that 1.1 acres, and the purchase price for that is $900,000. They're planning, anticipating building a 54-unit affordable housing development on the site if they're successful in attaining their tax credits through the Dakota County Community Development Agency. The big kind of highlights of the purchase agreements, a pretty standard agreement, it's very similar to what you saw, the one we did for Metcalf, essentially is that they are giving you $25,000 in earnest money. That money is held in a title company until the contingency date or the initial contingency date, which is April 1 of 2024. If they do not receive their land use approvals or their tax credit financing, they can withdraw from the deal and they would retain that earnest money. There are two extensions of two 90-day periods in which they would have to deposit additional $5,000 with you to get 90-day extensions, and if that happens, then the contingency date would then move out to November 1 of 2024. So again, their goal would be to move quickly, put in their applications. And the reason why we're moving forward the purchase agreement this time is they have their July deadline to make that application to Dakota County CDA, and one of the requirements is to show that they have site control. The typical due diligence that we have for the site, they'll be looking at all the reports that you have for wells, any other issues that there may be on the land, but knowing that it is being sold as is, the property that you do have. I think, you know, the two biggest issues in there are really the reader board. So that's located on that site right now. And so one of the requirements of the purchase of the property is that within 90 days of that reader board coming down, is that they have to build you a new one. So similar to what you've got out there today, technology, so that everything works together with what you currently have. And they'll consult with staff on the design, the size, and the location with regards to that. And then as we've had with our past agreements that we have, there is a covenant that will be in there that they won't use the property for school purposes, for public, private schools, et cetera, because that was one of your stipulations in which you were looking at to actually sell any property. So with that, that is the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions. And if you don't have any other questions about that or after we get through those, then we do have Marty with MWF Properties up here that can come up and introduce himself and their company and just tell you a little bit about what they're doing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion?
Just a couple clarification questions. So the covenant on the, how is that enforceable? I mean, so my understanding is this purchase agreement is between the district and the actual builder of the property, is that correct?
Developer, that's correct.
The actual developer. And then the developer will be the manager of the property, or is it
Correct.
They'll be the future owner running into the foreseeable future at least, correct?
Correct.
And how are we able to enforce the covenant after the fact? What would be the implication? What would be the ramifications if they were to suddenly put a school there?
Well, it's a deed restriction, right, that goes onto the property. So that's your, your
We would just have to sue them, basically, is what it would come down to. Okay.
So anyone who's buying the private, it's going to be used for apartments, right?
Yep.
So, you know, it would have to be someone who would come in the future that would want to buy the property for some other use than residential housing. That's the likely scenario that it would actually end up happening.
Right, right. Okay. All right. I had another thought, and I just flew out of my head. So I guess that's it.
I have a question. Do we anticipate any public disgruntledness like we did with Metcalf? I mean, are we going to have like a, do we need to have like a public meeting, like where people can voice any concerns like we did? I mean, is there, do we suspect that anybody might be upset about it? I guess it's like, I'm just trying to get ahead of anything that might become a problem. I mean, I don't know if people would be upset about a building going there or not. You just, but you never know, because people get upset about just about anything these days.
Chair, Director, that's a good question. The property is already, it's in a zoning district that already allows this use to go in there. The difference with our last one is that we had a comprehensive plan change in a pretty, that was surrounded by some residential neighborhoods. This is, you know, pretty much a commercial with apartments that surround it. But never say never. They'll go through the standard process that the city of Burnsville requires for their site plan approvals, and then any hearings and meetings that they have will be held at the city. But right now, we don't anticipate anything.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I did remember what I was doing.
I was wondering if you want
So the, the connection to the legislative process that we're engaged in, I'm assuming there's no timing issue here, that we're going forward with a purchase agreement ahead of that actually technically being ratified and done, right?
Chair, Director, that's correct. So I would assume in the education bill, it's, it's enacted upon signing by the governor, which he has signed.
That's what we're
So it's already in place.
In fact.
And the reality is, is it's really when you get the cash in.
Yeah, I thought I assumed the actual close is what matters. All right. Okay, that was it.
All right.
Stacy's going to read the resolution.
What's that?
Stacy's going to read the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to do the introductions first?
Well, Chair, if you're fine, maybe we'll invite Marty up from MWF. He can just give a little introduction of who they are and the company before you act.
Do you have a question, Director Alt?
No, I'd like to.
Oh, okay. You were about to say something. Come on up.
Thanks Superintendent Battle and members of the school board for considering this resolution today. We really appreciate it. My name is Marty O'Connell. I am a development associate with MWF Properties. Obviously, we're interested in purchasing a 1.1-acre portion of the property here with the intention of developing it into an apartment use. Just for some background, MWF Properties were based out of Richfield, Minnesota, so just a quick 10 minutes down 35W here. The company was founded in 1999, and since that time, we've developed approximately 2,700 units across about 45 properties. For reference, actually, we're currently developing the buildings that are located directly west of here and are scheduled to open in summer and fall of, respectively, this year. The majority of our developments are in the seven county metropolitan area, so we have a lot of familiarity with the local market, and we're homegrown. We're long-term owners of our developments. You know, once we build them and develop them, we don't sell them. We own them long-term. So it's really important and we really value, highly value, ensuring that our projects, you know, serve the communities that they're in, serve our neighbors really well, as well as obviously the residents of these buildings. We have an in-house property management company called Valer Property Management, and they manage all of our properties across our entire portfolio. We share the same office space with them, so we, you know, communicate with them and work with them on a daily basis. That allows us to have a very hands-on approach at the property level and have a very good understanding of, you know, how the properties are doing, and if there's any needs that arise, we can make some quick decisions on those needs. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have on our company, our background, or this proposal here before you today, but I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Just quick, I wish I'd known you were, we would have brought a hot dish or something for our new neighbor.
[laughter]
Yes, exactly. But welcome, thank you. And, you know, I would encourage you to relate back to your organization that, you know, we have a strong community education program here based right out of this building, so we look forward to the proximity and the opportunities that might present early childhood development careers right here. There's a lot of value for residents entering that building once it's built, so.
Absolutely, and if I can make a quick comment too, on kind of in that regard, the building that we're looking to propose and build is going to be really heavy on the two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, so it's going to be very, you know, family-oriented, and we're going to be kind of targeting families to live in the building, because we think it's a great location for, you know, obviously families living in the Burnsville School District, just being located so close to the DECA facility here, the Diamond Head Education Center, so yeah.
Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Hume. Yes, I'm, thank you so much for being here. It's nice to have a face to put with the name and the project, and I appreciated, you know, looking through, you know, preparing for tonight, appreciating that, the fact that this, this building is targeting families that really, you know, as a board, you know, what we were hoping for is that this would be not just something that was a fiscally sound decision for us, but that would enable us to be good partners to our community, to our taxpayers, and knowing that, and to our businesses, right, workforce, you know, we want our workers to have a place to live that's affordable, and, you know, hopefully, you know, everything will go well for you in that, in that vein too. So, you know, I just, I appreciate the door that this is opening and appreciate you coming forward with this, so thank you.
Appreciate that comment, thank you.
I'm just curious, on the resolution and the purchase agreement, it states Syndica LLP as well as MWF Properties LLC. What's the connection differentiation?
To be honest, I'm not sure what Syndica LLP is. I'm not sure if that was like a clerical error on the.
It's a clerical error.
Clerical error.
It's the MWF Properties.
Okay, okay.
Resolution.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Do we need to revise the resolution before we vote? Okay. But Stacy's going to read it before we vote. Okay.
Make sure I say it correctly. Any further questions or anything? Ready for the resolution?
I think we're ready.
Okay.
Will anybody else have questions? All right.
Resolution approving purchase agreement between Independent School District 191 and MWF LLP, LLC, I should say, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 191, Dakota and Scott Counties, Minnesota as follows. The School District and MWF Properties LLC, a Minnesota limited liability company, desire to enter into a purchase agreement, including without limitation certain addenda thereto pursuant to which the School District will convey certain property owned by the School District and located at or about 200 West Burnsville Parkway in the city of Burnsville, Dakota County, Minnesota, in the southeast corner of the property depicted on Exhibit 8 here to attach as the property. Pursuant to the purchase agreement, the School District will convey the property to the buyer for the purchase price of $900,000. The School District finds that the conveyance of property is desirable and in the best interest of the School District. On October 8, 2020, the School Board, the Board of the School District adopted a resolution entitled "Resolution Approving the Open Facilities Action Plan and Authorizing Administration to Proceed with Next Steps for Possible Sale or Lease of Open Facilities of 191." And on March 23rd, 2023, the Board of the School District adopted a resolution modifying such resolution entitled "Resolution Approving Modifications to the District's Open Facilities Action Plan and Authorizing District Administration to Consider Options for the Sale or Lease of Certain Open Facilities." Purchase Agreement approved. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary in the Open Facilities Resolution, the School District hereby approves the purchase agreement in substantially the form presented to the School District, subject to modifications that do not alter the substance of the transaction and that are approved by the Board Chair and Board Clerk of the School District, provided that execution of the purchase agreement by those officials shall be conclusive evidence of their approval. School District staff and officials are authorized to take all actions necessary to perform the School District's obligations under the purchase agreement as a whole, including without limitation the execution of any documents to which the School District is a party referenced in or attached to the purchase agreement, and of any deed or other documents necessary to convey the property to the buyer, all as described in the purchase agreement. Approved this 25th day of May 2023 by the School Board of Independent School District 191, Dakota and Scott Counties, Minnesota.
Thank you, Stacy. And with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item we are being asked to approve is the Burnsville Ice Center rental agreement for the 22, or 2023-24 school year in the estimated amount of $45,187.50 for a total of 180.75 hours of ice time.
Thank you, Chair Hume. Dean Musso from the City Ice Arena, Kevin Kleiner and myself met early May, late April to start reviewing our contract. The city did ask us to move forward with this fairly quickly so that they could go ahead and start planning ice time moving forward, not only for our interest, to make sure that our two teams had access to the ice, but also so that they could fill the ice time with the other renters, potential renters. Some of the big things to note in this, we are moving to allow students to access the games without charge, which is one of the driving factors as to the increase in our rental fee with them. We do have more ice time than what we had previously, but to offset the cost of students getting in for free, we have a $1,700 base amount per game. So what that $1,700 base amount includes is cleaning the ice, the use of the facility for the time of the games, plus the ticket gates. So if they don't reach $1,700, then we're charged the minimum rate of $1,700. Anything above $1,700, that's where we split the gate fees 50/50 going forward, okay? Part of that is, there will be certain games that occur where we won't reach the $1,700 threshold with, with ticket sales, and then there will be other games where we'll exceed it probably pretty substantial. But the ice ring still does need to try to break even through this process. With that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approves the Burnsville Ice Arena rental agreement for the 2023-24 school year in the estimated amount of $45,187.50 for the total of 180 hours and three-quarter, 180 and three-quarter hours of ice time.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? Director Miller?
I'd like clarification on this $1,700 thing. I saw that in the contract, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I didn't remember that being in there before. That's relative to every game played there?
Game, so not.
So for instance, we are booking a holiday tournament for the Phoenix team, the girls' combo team. I don't know that they're even charging gate fees for the, I don't know, maybe they are, so there's a number of games involved with that. Are those all subject to that clause?
So, I don't know about tournaments that are outside, if that's a sponsor type of a thing, but the games in which, so we have like three games for girls, and then I think five or six.
Six for the boys.
Games for the boys. That's what was the focus for the 1,700. It's the, it's the three games that are probably going to come in under the threshold of the 1,700. That's to offset.
The three girls' games you're feeling.
Sure.
Phoenix games, okay.
Yeah. The historical attendance has been less for students.
Yes, I understand the point. And your anticipation is the six varsity, boys varsity and JV? That's the other point. Usually there, it's a combo.
Yep.
Day, there's a JV game and a varsity game.
It's the whole. It's the whole package for the night of a game.
So we typically charge, and according to this, it looks like we're stating we would need on a, like a just given day, something in the neighborhood of three, or well, it looks about four to five hours of ice time alone, which is $1,100, $1,200 or something like that, plus I think they charge us a cleaning fee in addition to that.
Yep.
So you're already at, for a typical day of JV varsity round of games, you're somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,300, $1,400, right? So you're saying with a, they would take 100% of gate up to 1,700 and then split the gate after that?
Right. We would, we would pay them for at least the 1,700. Yep. So that does include the.
But in exchange, any student can show up and go to the game for free.
That's right.
And how will that be regulated?
Student ID.
They must have, must produce a student ID.
Yep, yep, provide their student ID.
And that's only a Burnsville and/or Apple Valley student that's admitted?
Anyone that's a part of our coalition for the teams. That's probably not the right.
Well, sorry, I was being very specific to the boys, but I understand for the, so in fact, that would be quite a few schools for the girls that could be potentially coming to games.
Potentially, yep.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, and I guess I would just like to, more of a statement than a question, I think it's interesting, it's a positive note that the last year's schedule we had for the, for the boys co-op, we planned only two games at the, at the Burnsville rink. The rest of the games were all to be played at Apple Valley, and as it worked out, I think it was three that ended up there because they were rescheduled, but this time we're booking six. And that is actually a direct response of the Apple Valley family saying, we like playing at Burnsville better than we like playing at the Apple Valley rink, because we have a really beautiful rink here, so. So I'm glad to see that has been added to the schedule, so. Okay. And then otherwise, just all the practices, there's nothing different or unique or different change in the contract language around those, correct?
There's inflationary increases for the ice time and.
Well, yes, that's, that is correct. I can tell you how much that's gone up in the six years I've been looking at this contract yet. But yes, okay. That's entirety of my questions, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any others? If not, then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to adopt a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary certified personnel and long-term substitute teachers at the close of the 22-23 school year. Stacy is once again presenting.
Yep. And we presented our initial list in early April. We just still have some cleanup, some new long-term subs that were just recently hired for the rest of the year, as well as one virtual academy teacher that came to us late in the, in the year and just didn't hit the list on the first go. So that's why we do the cleanup sometimes the second around. And again, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District 191, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40, that the teaching contracts of the following licensed probationary teachers and long-term substitutes in Independent School District 191 be terminated at the end of the 2022-23 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notices sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of their contract as provided by law.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This concludes our regular board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn to a workshop about FY24 budget, followed by a closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A for the superintendent's evaluation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This particular portion of the meeting is adjourned at 8:16 PM. And we will take a 10-minute break, recess, and reconvene at 8:26. Thank you.
I'd like the opportunity to reevaluate my clothes. I didn't realize Stacy was going to read that.
8:26, so I think our 10 minutes is up. And we have our budget workshop.
Ooh.
I will hand it off to the two of you.
Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board. So tonight Stacy Solvin and I will give an update about our fiscal year 24 budget development. So this will include preliminary information we have gleaned about the Minnesota Legislature passage of the K-12 Omnibus Education Bill. And I believe we heard earlier that Governor Walz may have signed it, so it may be official. We're also going to give you updates about specific additional funding, feedback from our public budget meeting, as well as our family meetings, Spanish-speaking families and Somali families, as well as principal meetings with their staff. Also, we'll share some next steps. Previously, I shared that I was cautiously optimistic about the funding for education by the legislature. That was primarily because of the possibility of having more unfunded mandates. So I am happy for the historic investment in education and that our legislatures did listen to us. School staff members as well as board members did not have unfunded mandates. And so they did find some way to provide some funding for some of the additional requirements that are now mandated for districts. There is still much to learn. Actually, this morning, there was also a provision from, about, from labor. There was a separate policy bill. And so this morning, Minnesota School Boards Association had an hour session from a member from DEED, Department of Labor, Economic and Employment, to share information about the unemployment insurance for hourly unlicensed employees. So we, as others, have many questions, so it was good to actually hear from that person. That was recorded. So board members, you have access to that if you like. I think there were 660 people on the, Stacy and I shared. I started, but then we said we need to be in the office together so we could kind of ask questions and see if we're understanding. And then actually tomorrow, our another membership that we have is the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. We'll have a session with Minnesota Department of Education staff to give an overview and some brief implications. Stacy and I will be there in person. Some other staff members plan to join via Zoom because of the implications throughout our system. The Omnibus Bill, the summary bill was 25 pages double-sided, so there's a lot to go through. And so we are trying to get the information. We do need guidance from MDE, DEED also. And so we need to have that guidance in writing because there's so much. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to Stacy Solvin, and we'll go back and forth with our slides here.
Well, I think that pretty well summarizes it. Any questions?
Just to set things off here, as you can see, we've grayed out the, our timeline and we are quickly approaching the presentation of our adopted budget, proposed budget for FY24. Tonight, we will be, we're at the stage now where we're reporting back on the feedback that we received from our staff and the community members, and then also, as Dr. Battle alluded to, some of the legislative impact. In June, I will be turning this over to our Director of Finance, who will be presenting the work that their department has been doing. And they will present a new budget format to you, pretty comprehensive as a, as a total. It's going to be close to 200 pages plus. So there is a lot of information that we will be providing to you this go-around. So we did our initial run-through this morning of that and took a couple of hours looking through everything, and we are excited to bring that forward to you. Again, just to recap, our FY24 strategies for a structurally sustainable budget, these remain the same as they have in the past, prioritizing our investments for K-12 pathways, maintaining class size parameters, using our restrictive funds before general undesignated funds. Again, understanding the ebb and flow of funding that comes from the state and other revenue streams. We will be facing a reduction with the amount of federal funds after this year with the go, with the ESAR funds going away. So we have been preparing for that so that we have some time in the long run to adjust our budget as needed. Next page here, focusing on our pathways. Again, at our last meeting with Director, with Amina and her team, she presented the pathways, K-12. Just to recap on that, how we are.
Just a note on that, too. So the board did ask for a request to provide more information about the funding for pathways since it's a priority. So if you recall, 80% of our budget is spent on staff, and so we need staff to deliver the experience of the pre-K-12 pathways. So the core, those are teachers who provide that. The enrichment, those are teachers and other staff who provide that. And of course, the extracurricular, we have coaches and other staff that provide that. So that is the priority for our budget, is to continue those investments for the instructional priorities. Stacy?
Okay. Just some of the highlights in addition to what Dr. Battle has presented. Our operating referendum, school boards across the state will now have the authority to renew up to one time operating referendums that are in place, as long as they really don't change the language or the amount. So you will be able, there's a process for that. We can go into more detail. It does have to occur early June, mid-June is when some of the action, there's public hearing, number of different things with that. But instead of having to use resources to run a special election or to run elections, the school board is able to save that and to renew it at least one time. There is a formula increase of 4% for FY24 and 2% for FY25. And then beginning in FY26, there will be an inflationary adjustment with a floor of 2% and a ceiling of 3% for inflation. It doesn't mean that future legislation, legislators may not make adjustments in addition to the inflationary component, but that's built in on the front end. Special education cross-subsidy, there's a reduction of $662 million. This is statewide money, by the, by the way, just to make sure that folks understand that.
Yeah.
And, and then moving up to $821 million the following year. So we'll be reducing the, the cross-subsidy from, down to 44% in FY24 and '25, and then it'll bump up to, there'll actually be a reduction of 50% starting in FY27. Our English language learners also is receiving a cross-subsidy impact of about $40.5 million in FY24, and then incrementally goes up to $124 million in FY27. Also, there are some adjustments for the Teachers Retirement Fund. It will be lowering, the state is lowering the normal retirement age from 66 to 65. So that would be, that's your full retirement age if, in like terms of social security. There are different points at which you could exit, but for full retirement, it will not be at the age of 65. That goes for those hired after July 1st of 1989. Prior to that, they would have fallen under the rule of 90 language that was in place. Okay? To offset that, the employer contribution will have to increase by three quarters of a percent. The employee will have to pitch in a quarter of a percent. This is a quarter of percent of their annual salary. That will be then redirected towards the Teacher Retirement Association. The increased cost for school districts will be covered by the state with about $102 million for FY26. Compensatory funding was enhanced as well for '26-'27. This was intended to hold harmless districts with the enactment of the universal meals. In, in early June, we'll have an update on what that will look like. Meals will be universal, however, there still will need to be documentation for educational benefits for the purposes of compensatory, for our title, for scholarships, for activities and sports, and for a number of other things. Otherwise, we won't be able to provide those benefits and our funding will decrease. So there's still, even with the headline of universal free meals, we still need our partners in the community to complete these forms so that our funding isn't impacted. This first piece under compensatory is to help districts offset that implementation dip in that part of the process. The big one probably that is different for schools is that school hourly workers can receive unemployment benefits between terms is the language that is being used from the Department of Economic Development, Employment and Economic Development. So today was our first meeting. I have two more scheduled by June 1st that will be updating just on the unemployment stuff. So, you know, you have the lawmakers that implement the law, and you have all the departments that then start interpreting and say, this is how we go about doing it. So we're in that informational stage right now. And so what that will end up looking like, the state did provide $135 million. That is one-time money that will be exhausted by FY27, okay? Or sooner. We don't know. So it is one-time money that is available. We still will have to impact, understand the impact to the district. The way that it sounds is folks would apply for unemployment, Department of DEED will then bill us quarterly like they do right now for what that. Department of DED will then bill us quarterly, like they do right now, for what that will reflect. Pelo language is changing also for inherent managerial rights in terms of conditions of employment. So teachers are able to now negotiate the amount of adults, the student ratios in the classroom, student testing, and student personnel ratios. So that will be something that will be, we'll see how that plays out. Maybe different cost implications with that as well going forward. Then the Paid Family and Medical Leave Act for the state, which will begin in January 2026. This is extending through payroll tax, extending the ability for anyone to have a FMLA that is covered with that. And again, more details to follow on what that will end up looking like for us. So the next page is a little bit more closer to home. So our FY24 revenue increase, again, 4% increase is approximately 2.3 million for 191 on our general formula. Special education cross-subsidy will be about 4.7. Our EL cross-subsidy will be 1 million. Compensatory offset, that one-time money is about $600,000. Again, we will have a portion of that $135 million. Every district, every charter school in the state will be going after that $135 million. So that will, we'll see how that plays out. Other areas, we're still going to have to kind of wade through a lot of changes for community ed and what that'll look like as well. As far as funding, good news is they're making the VPK program permanent. They've added seats, the funding, so that's really good for that early start on education. We're excited about that. But there's some other language as far as tenuring teachers that are ECFE in those areas, and we're not sure what implications that'll look like. So there's just push and pull, push and pull through this whole part of the process. 24 expenses increase, our summer unemployment. Right now, our best guess is around two, guess is a little too broad. Based upon projections, we're looking at around $2.5 million. That would be your EA's food service. It could include our clerical, community ed staffing, hourly, non-licensed employees. So we have a few that are in our unaffiliated group. So that would include potentially your cultural liaisons, our LPNs, our RNs, our hourly. So different folks in a number of different areas. Also, the Pelo changes for class sizing, staffing ratios, testing, that can, depending on what is negotiated at the table, can have quite an impact as well as to what your, you and future boards are able to leverage as ways to provide service and control cost. Again, we talked a little bit about our community ed programming. We are waiting to learn more about that.
Take the next slide. Community meeting feedback. So the general public, Stacy and I presented that budget. We had one attendee. And then Jason Sellers, our Director of Community Education, presented at the Somali and Hispanic parent meetings. So total about 30 people, representative of our community demographics. And then our principals had staff meetings, as well as our directors, to let our staff understand where we were with our budget and to gather any input or feedback. So summary of what we heard, there was, there were abundant expressions of appreciation. Enrollment is good. Virtual Academy social worker, pleased about that. The addition of the Director of Equity, adding once again middle school and boys volleyball. That was a big hit with our middle school parents, the extracurricular. Additional support for multilingual students. Excited about the upcoming AA degree at Burnsville High School. Once again, the return to middle school sports, they mentioned that again. We had done that in this budget year. Anticipation of our Burnsville High School principal, leadership of color, and the smaller class sizes and teacher-to-student ratios that we are using ESER funds for particularly. Then, having a quick dash with Aaron, or I'm covering that one, too?
Some of our most common comments that was provided in the survey, our online survey. I'm glad to see that there are no cuts and that we're maintaining class sizes, that we are, that it's appreciative, that we're adding student supports, especially behavior supports at the elementary level, that we are recognizing the growing population of our multilingual students, and quite frankly, we'd just like to see more of everything. Just throw that out there. Questions? What behavior support position at the elementary school will look like and possibly a little bit of confusion around the elementary staffing versus the middle school and the high school staffing and what those ratios look like? So overall, since March 23rd through May 15th, we had 27 more responses that was provided for us.
A little bit, I'll turn it over to Stacy with the budget adjustment revision. So the first one is, as comments were made from our community about the increase of our multilingual students. So Stacy, in enrollment, he checks in. We're still enrolling students, aren't we? And we're still seeing that increase of our multilingual learners. And then the next two are really impacted by the omnibus bill. So Stacy will give you details about that.
So again, we talked briefly about the unemployment for summer, and also, we're talking about the free and reduced meals. Free and reduced meals going to the CEP program, we still have to do validation, a level of validation, but we can't use food service funds to do that. So the work that has been done all this time in food service and was covered under the O2 fund balance now has to move over to the general fund balance. So we'll need clerical support outside of food service to pull that off. So we are, one of the things that we'll do is we're, we'll push that into enrollment going forward, and that'll be in the annual process and record-keeping, and that'll kind of continue in that area. The unemployment piece, we have 12-month employees, 11-month employees, 10-and-a-half month employees, and 10-month employees in the clerical unit. We are moving them all to 12 months. The clerical unit already has built-in vacation time and has a, has the ability that prorates based upon a number of months in which they work to increase their, their vacation time. So it doesn't really seem to make much sense to have partial-year employees pay vacation and then potentially unemployment on top of that. We've been working with the union leadership on this and have a plan on that transition, and hopefully, we'll be moving forward with that as, as well. That seems to be one of those economic levers that we could use. Also, we're requesting that we add $3.5 million just to a contingency line within the budget. And quite frankly, that's just a, just to make sure that we don't over-budget and commit in different areas until we have a true impact of what the unfunded mandates will look like for us going forward. Again, remember, the unemployment, we said we have a liability there of about $2.5 million. We do have one-time funding, but we're going to have to make some adjustments on what that may look like going forward beyond that. So we are setting aside within our budget just to see what other types of things will be moving forward. I had another one that I, and I just, it slipped my mind, but I think I-
Let me give you an example, some of the discussion there. One district, there was a, there's new graduation requirements, so they added courses. And so one is a finance course. We currently do have a teacher that can teach finance. Some districts, they didn't have a teacher, so they have to add a teacher. Also, there's a requirement to have a literacy lead in the district. Luckily, we have a literacy lead. There are other districts, they don't have a literacy lead. So it's really going in those details and matching it to where we are, and then where we may need to add or where we're good. We think we're good, so. And then the rollout of the years are different. So for example, the unemployment insurance takes effect May 28?
Yep.
So our, our organizations, AMSD, our professional organizations, oh, AMSD and MSBA did request to give some time for districts. They did ask for an August start. That was not approved. So that's why we really need to have the first meeting with DED this morning. So that's why MSBA set that up really quickly.
And every time they present, it just provides an opportunity to come up with more questions or, or understanding as well. One of the things that they were talking about today is, if a person were to resign from the district today, while we're still within our school year, week and a half away, they may not be eligible. But after school is out, if they were to resign from the district, well, that's between terms, so therefore, they're not technically employed. So that wouldn't disqualify them from being eligible for unemployment. We struggle at times already with folks kind of hanging on through the summer just for the insurance benefits. Now, we're also going to compound that, and I'm, I'm a little bit concerned what August 20th will look like for our staffing, because folks may wait till the end of the summer before providing notice, and then we will be scrambling last minute. Again, don't know. These are some of the unknowns. Okay? So we do have the, the list as we've provided before, reflecting a couple of the updates within that. Also, just updating our assumptions and our projected changes for, this is again, is for your general fund budget. So our revenue is, we're looking at about $18.5 million. Expenditures, 15.5 million. So we're looking at close to $3 million increase in our general fund, moving it from $32.5 million to about 35. If you recall, it's a little bit lower than what we were, our initial assumptions back in February that we presented. So it, it has backed up a little bit for us, but for right now, we're still getting ourselves to that position. And I, and I can't overstate, we are trying to put ourselves into a position that once the ESER funds, over, well, close to $9 million goes away, that we are not having to suddenly look for $9 million of budget cuts. We are looking at trying to have monitored, measured reductions afterwards for at least four years to get you to a place of about a 12% fund balance. You can always adjust that, but our goal is to at least give you options so that you're not having to take a large hit all at once.
So a note, I mentioned in my opening remarks that there has been historic investment into education, yet we still are not matching inflationary costs. So this board has been very familiar that the total cross-subsidy in previous years for both special ed and EL amounted to approximately $10 million, $7 million for special education, and $3 million for EL. So with the increases, special ed cross-subsidy is 4.7 million of that 7 million. They still have not closed it. And then for EL, the cross-subsidy was 1 million of that 3 million. So based on all the historic investment, if you look at the fund balance increase, it's approximately about 3 million additional that we got.
For the general fund?
For the general fund.
So that will be one of the things that you'll notice when you get the full budget document. Our general fund will increase by about 3 million. Your total budget overall is only going to be about a $600,000 increase.
So we just wanted to give you the context of historic.
Are you done?
Thank you.
Lose your report? Thank you very much. Board members, comments and questions? I imagine there might be a few.
I think the first one I have is the, "School boards are authorized to renew an operating referendum question one time." Is, is that the referendum that we have with inflation built in? Okay.
The, the inflationary piece, if you have that in place, you can maintain that in place. We can't change the dollar amount, and you can't change the term. So we approved ours initially for 10 years. You can approve it for another 10 years at the same amount with the inflationary piece.
And that one was approved in 2019, if I remember correctly.
That was fairly recent. Yep. So you, you have, again, we will get into this as we get closer, but there is a pretty scripted timeline that has to occur if the board is going to choose to go in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to understand it. Because we're at the max, plus inflation, and we already know on it. So why would we, I mean, it sounds like we just take that as well, unless the max is the move, but?
For, for us, yes. We're in a pretty good position to where we would want to renew it for the same amount of time. Other districts may, you know, they, they may want to increase, add the inflationary component if they don't already have it.
Yeah, I was trying to put hour limits on that one.
We'll let you go first, then.
So, Dr. Battle, when you called out the, you know, that we're maintaining the staffing, you got me thinking about the stuff in our pathways, right? Appreciating that the staffing is important and it's the most important part of the process. How are we dealing with this stuff? You know, the food for culinary, the plastic for engineering, the, you know, all the things that go into the classroom that help the students learn. Are we paying for that?
So we have to look at the other funding sources we have. So achievement and integration, there's some materials in there. We look at the-
Perkins.
The Perkins, yeah. The Perkins Fund, which is the federal funding pass-through, because that's specifically for career and technical, so we still have that funding source. So you have to look at the federal funding when you look at the pathways, too, in combination with the state.
Our initial presentation, we talked about the assumptions, and this is one that Director Miller pointed out, where we were talking about 18% for energy increases. We had inflationary increases for supplies and for all of the other instructional pieces as well.
And that's your, the educational surprise?
The stuff is. Yep, that's a part of it all.
Those consumables, so you cook, the food is gone. You have to replace it for the next. It's not like a textbook or, the Chromebooks are sturdy. Yeah, so consumables.
You cook a Chromebook, it is.
Yeah.
Multiple terms there, multiple meanings, yeah.
Starting at the end, the current reality, FY slide, the numbers on it. So the, so does this include the Slide 11 budget adjustment revision?
Revisions, adjustments are inside, so specifically the 3.5 million is added inside?
Yeah, so everything that we talked about here, we've updated this high level for you.
Yep. Yeah, good, all right. Yeah, I, I mean, these bullets under Legislative Update, I have a lot of questions.
So do we.
I know, I know, and I appreciate that a fair amount of this. Actually, before I even start, I would like to make a statement, and that is that I assume, like many of you, I reacted to the MSBA requests for advocacy and sent in, I would just like to point out that I received no response from my local legislators, not even an acknowledgement that I had sent something in. I did receive a response from a statewide person who was happy that I was-
The same one who replied to my message.
Yes, probably, but that was disappointing. But anyway, let's see, back to this, so we covered off the, I was asked about the operating- But anyway, um, let's see, back to this, so we covered off the, I was asked about the operating referendum. So the, the linking of, of the formula to inflation, I, I mean, I know I'm asking subjective or hypothetical questions, but I'm, if I understand that right, what they're basically saying is guarantee, at this point, they're guaranteeing a minimum of two every year, up to three, even if the legislature at the time wants to say, uh, there's no, no increase. They're forced to give us at least a two, up to three, depending on what a state identified inflationary index or something like that.
Don't have all of the details, but they do have a formula as to when that index is reported and what they will use for the upcoming fiscal year for that.
It's the consumer pricing.
Yeah, I would guess it would be linked to the C P I probably.
Isn't the inflation, sorry, isn't the inflationary one only in effect for like two years after the current two-year cycle? That wasn't, hasn't it sunset?
No, 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 that's when it kicks in.
That's when it starts. I thought I had heard that it was only.
So we have four and two, and then in, in year three.
There will be the inflationary.
I misunderstood. I thought.
Until another legislative body removes all of this. That's what I was.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I'm assuming there's no, I mean, you probably don't, I'm assuming there's no, no special protection here that, yeah, of this. It's a. Yeah, yes. Well, some things that get added half special need or have special pass to get removed, but I'm guessing this is pretty simply, simple to remove. All right. So the, we kind of, you did touch on the cross subsidy stuff. I was going to ask for more specific to how that impacts. So I guess you covered that. Let's see, where was, was the, um, so the, when we, you talked a little bit about possible impact on the, um, the hourly workers, unemployment benefits. You're making an assumption that everybody eligible would apply, correct, in your, in your calculations?
As with any liability and risk, yes.
That's fair. I, I agree. I just, so, I mean, it's probably fair to actually assume that some amount of them won't even know that they have that as an option available to them. And then others might choose to do something else during the summer, right? I mean, then making them ineligible for this.
The big phrase from the department was, we don't communicate that they wouldn't be eligible. It is up to the employee to apply and for the department to determine their eligibility. They're, they're looking at this very much as, there's really not much anything new here. Because the federal guidelines, all of their practices, they're, they're not changing any of their practices. They have their formulas, their checklist to go through to see if you're eligible. They will continue to follow that. And we have our break room posters that says, you know what, you can file for unemployment if you're not working and, and we, that's mandated. We have to have that out in, in the different buildings. So the big thing is, it's, they just said employers do not try to judge whether a person is eligible or not. That's up to the department.
Yeah.
They also said that this group of employees is new for them. And it's going to be more work for school districts.
Yeah.
That was the other key message he told us. Yeah, this is a new group. So they're making some assumptions. But Minnesota has identified a new group.
So, but it, it's just like any other unemployment experience, I assume, right?
Yes.
It's been a long time since I've done that, but it was borderline. I was like, I, I'm not sure this is worth the effort, right? I mean, it was a lot of, you had the paperwork to file, I had to find the right person in the county, I had to go meet with them, you know, and, and it was, it was a lengthy process. And then meet on a regular basis and show that I was trying to get a job or whatever it was.
Right now it's all online. It's an ongoing subject.
Okay, well, I'm sure it's probably.
You know, but you do, you check in on a weekly basis. Did you look for employment? Do you, did you find anything? Was anything offered to you? Are you still working? Are you not working? And yeah, they'll run you through that process. Has your income changed or anything along that line? Again, that.
Well, is that, is that an assumption that they're permanently unemployed? Because like, if there's, if, if there's a seasonality to their job, like, they would have to find something during their unemployed time before they come back. I'm, I'm just thinking because like.
If they don't find anything that doesn't disqualify them.
They're treating it as if you lost your job, you didn't get to work for three months, then whoop, you got your job back.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, well, I mean.
You knew that was what was going to happen. They just, that's the sequence of events that occur.
Yeah, cause like, like my, I have relatives in the trades. And so some of that is seasonality because you can't do some trades during a certain part of the season. So like in the winter, there's like a three month dead period in which they can collect unemployment or whatever. And then they're coming back into the fold of their, you know, so it kind of sounds like.
It's exactly the same thing, right? I mean.
It really is, except for contractors can bid that into their.
I was gonna say, except that industry was built around that happening.
Right, right. This is new to us.
This is a new group. Yeah. That's what he meant. This is a new group.
Yes.
So this, this group be, prior to that, they would just be off for the summer?
Uh, they would be off in the summer and our contracts take the nine months of employment. And we distribute that over twenty-four pay periods throughout the entire year. So their income.
So they get paid in the summer too?
They would, they, right.
Okay, got it.
So they would have continued. So again, some, we may need to make some tweaks on, on a number of different things when it comes around. Do we do twenty-four pay periods? Do we less twenty-four pay periods? How do we?
Well, and how does that impact unemployment? Because if somebody's receiving a paycheck in the summer when they're not working, they, they wouldn't qualify for unemployment.
No, no, no. Working.
Working.
Are you working? Not whether you're getting paid. Are you working? That's their first question.
Well, I, I, I get that, but if you, if you leave and you cash in your vacation time, your unemployment doesn't start until the, until the end of your, your like severance or whatever. So would that, would their unemployment income decline?
It's not vacation. It's just deferred compensation.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they're still getting a paycheck.
It's not.
There's, there's gonna be room for a lot of people to have that very question.
Yeah. No, but would it reduce what they would receive in unemployment because they get a paycheck?
Yeah. So they're paying them during the summer essentially for the work they did September through May.
Yeah, right.
Spreading out the.
And the reason. Spreading out what they're paying for the work that they did, right?
And, and those were negotiated agreements.
Okay.
Because a, a number of our employees didn't want to have to worry about what their income would look like over the summer month.
Sure.
So they asked that it be distributed over the full year.
Got it. Okay.
So on to the next, the, the payroll language changes around managerial rights. Just understand the phrasing you used here. We're not required to put any of that in. It's just they're allowed to bring that to the table and we can't refuse it under the, under the auspices of it being managerial rights.
Right. Okay. So we could still, you know, negotiate the value of that. We can negotiate the impact of that. It's like, fine. You know, when we talk about lowering class size by like one student across the district for all of our equations, you know, there's, that's a couple of million dollars. If they want to cost that against their package, they, you know, they may want to do that. There may be a value to them. They may not.
What is student testing in there?
That one's a little vague, but that could be the number of times testing occurs, the, whether they're required to proctor potentially the test?
Standardized testing or any kind of testing?
Well, I would, well, I guess I, I'd like to assume that the required testing is, that we have to do is.
So I'm hoping we'll get information tomorrow from A B about that one.
And define proctored testing, because if someone has, is, has an I E P, they are guaranteed by law to have their test proctored.
Yeah, but not necessarily by the teacher if it's negotiated.
Not by the teacher. There you go. Okay.
Oh, this is mucky.
All right. Um, I think that was probably about it for me for the moment at least.
Are we feeling an impact? This has nothing to do, no, it has expenses. I understand we have record numbers of stu, of, uh, young people applying to be part of Project Kids in the summer and the question of whether or not they're going to have enough staff to cover Project Kids in the summer. Is that related to some of, like, is, is there, is there still an issue with, with hiring and will there be, because of the unemployment opportunity over the summer, are we going to be seeing an impact on whether or not we can staff summer school and all these other components? Or are we already seeing more people wanting to participate?
That's to be determined. I, I mean, um, we've already received three resignations that had committed to summer school. So I don't know.
And we do have a waitlist for summer.
Yep.
So to put that out there, we have to have staffing or we can't have children. So I know parents are waiting. They're on the waitlist.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember when we talked about this before, if we offer them a job in the summer school, they don't have to take it. They could take the unemployment.
Right.
It has to be substantially the same amount of hours, the same amount of pay, the same type of work. And again, I, I don't want anything that I'm saying, this is just what the department shared with us before they even start looking at saying, no, this is, you have a job, you have something. But our summer school is not set up to be the same as, as what folks are working during the school year. The pay would be in most cases the same. Actually, it's a little bit better for taking summer school for E A's.
Sure.
But the amount of hours in a week and within a day is less.
So I don't have a new adjective about where I am yet. Lance was cautiously optimistic. So I'm happy about the investment. I just have to see the implications. We're getting there. Rome wasn't built in a day. We're getting there with the additional toward inflation. That was good.
Yeah, but historic is probably maybe a wrong word.
In terms of number of dollars, it is, but. It's offset by other increases, I think. A lot of it is.
Offsets and shifts.
Um, I had a question with the compensatory funding also. So I think you said that you were estimating that we would get about six hundred thousand of the one-time offset?
Yep, that's an offset.
And the state total for that is twenty point six million. So that's a pretty large chunk of the statewide fund that would just come to our district. Okay.
Yeah, we're, we are within the top fifteen easily for compensatory funds, I, I would say.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Cause that's like, yeah. Not every district can get that much. So, okay. That was my main question that hasn't already been asked.
Well, just to clarify though, we still have to gather information and have families fill out the free and reduced lunch application for other purposes.
Yeah. And, and we're, we're, we're going to move more towards educational benefit forms versus free and reduced because that, it's like, free is free, isn't it? And it's like, no, it's the other educational benefits we're looking for.
Focusing more, that's what, I was glad you brought that up because I was thinking that a few minutes ago. Focusing more on the non-meal related educational benefits is probably gonna be, we're gonna have to do moving forward.
I was thinking about that during the, uh, the presentation, the SPA presentation, that if, if we're going to think about, you know, looking at the different student groups, we must have the educational benefits information more accurate, I mean, as accurately as possible.
We'll have to drive that incentive to complete the form.
That's smart to change the wording though.
Yeah.
Honestly, the, the impact to the, um, a lot of the, um, benchmarks that were required to address in the different areas. You know.
That could be, that, that could be the, the line in the, in the, um, the tracking graph, right? That this is the year that, that free, that universal free lunch happened and this was where the applications dropped off. Right? And, and, and our ability to track our, our support of, of, um, students in need in that way was, was not as accurate.
Yeah.
I will point out, and it's kind of come up now a number of different times, is the amount of support time that's going to be needed for tracking and validating and communicating and getting information out so that we're not seeing an impact. I mean, on any given year, my department probably works through, I don't know, thirty, maybe thirty-five unemployment claims with, with folks that we've either released or different things over the time. I mean, this is going to increase tenfold. And each and every summer, closer to three hundred and fifty to four hundred claims that will come up that we will have to review and challenge the facts on them if we need to challenge. There's a lot of, well, again, that's a part of the unintended implications, but there will be a lot more tracking and processing, uh, the information for the stuff.
That's the clerical staff. Since that May twenty eighth, they had to see.
Yeah.
Where they were. Cause yeah, the processing.
For the educational benefits form, I think it'll be important to emphasize what the educational benefits entail. Because I know like, there's several programs outside of the school district that weighs eligibility for their program on this information too. And so the, I don't know if that, understanding that, that broader impact that, that data is needed in some way, shape or fashion for the student's benefit, for eligibility to participate in the other activities.
Yes. And, and I am no expert on food services, but on May or June eighth, we will be diving a little bit into the, the C E P programming that we will be doing. But even the, the forms and maintaining our percentage district wide, we'll have to do some process changes as far as students with the meals going through the point of sales. So that we make sure that our numbers are on the high end to maintain the revenue. We have a lot of adjustments that we're going to be making.
So compensatory.
Waving them through the line.
Well, it's, if a student at this point in time says, I, I'm not, I don't want to go, or I'm not hungry, or whatever, that actually will take away from our revenue to offset all of the costs. So we literally are going to have to become perfunctory and everybody goes through the line. Everybody either gets a meal or a qualifying meal per federal guidelines. And then whether they want that drop bag, if you will, or not.
So even if they bring their lunch to school?
We would still have them go through and get the.
Are you kidding?
Yeah. So we're gonna, this was the first, we wanted to take this opportunity to share this in the public. Gonna work with the officers to see if we could add it, unit a formal report, cause it's a big change for people. It's gonna be, this is a new program that's C E P.
It sounds like it's very different than what people kind of got used to during COVID.
So like my, my pinky pants daughter who can't stand anything except for the exact same home lunch she has every single day will have to go through the lunch line to take a bag.
There are a lot of implications to this.
Behavior changes.
So kids need it. We'll figure it out.
We'll get there.
It's a good thing. It's food insecurity.
There's, there's food insecurity, but there's also, there's, there's a potential for some least.
Remember, we transform our educational system in eight days with COVID. So that's my hope for this.
Like maybe have another table. Like I brought a home lunch. I went through the line. Here it is. Somebody else can take it. Yeah, but some other kid can take it. Yeah, I like that idea.
Any other comments for this evening? Like we're getting kind of.
I'm gonna have to let Jamie know.
Say thank you to you both. I know it's, it's very odd for, for me personally, and I imagine for. I know it's, it's very odd for, for me personally, and I imagine for others, getting all of this budget information and we're so deep into the process and so close to needing to approve a budget, and there's still so many unanswered questions and uncertainties. So thank you to the two of you and your teams for all the work that I know is going to probably go, continue going into this until the last possible minute before we have to approve it. I'm sure we'll have lots more questions in the next month between now and then.
I like the budget report.
Oh, gosh. More transparency, yeah.
All right, we will
Are we ended?
Move to the other room for our closed session.
9:19?
Uh, 9:19.
I have to let Jamie know.